Are we good? All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started with the zoning board meeting. For February 13th, we are starting with our 715 hearing which the applicant has asked to continue until the April 9th meeting. So I guess I just need a motion for that.
Sure, I move that we continue the hearing for Charles Audi to amend his special permit under section 7.3.4 and several other sections. For relief of parking design standards at 143 Sudbury Road until, is he wanted us for next week?
Uh, no, April 9th.
Oh, April 9th, so do you continue it to April 9th?
715.
715, perfect.
Second.
All in favor? Hi, great. All right, moving right along to 716, Stephen Keating. Is it 716? Perfect, you are right on time. Hi, come forward. Yeah, you can come forward if you have a... Is that a...
Do you want, you have a pointer to give me?
Oh, okay, great.
Anywhere.
I'm Stephen Keating, so the owner of residence at 10 Tracy Street. Here representing my wife as well, so Jamie Palmer Keating. And we're proposing to add about 811 square feet to our existing property. And the house right now is 985 square feet, so a pretty modest home. The new total will be 1795 feet. And so what we're doing is essentially just adding second story to the house, no additional footprint to the house at all. Just kind of raising the roof line up six feet and then adding a second story to the top. We've received, so we're in the White Pond Advisory Committee area as well, so we've received a letter of support from them. We've received letters of support from our three abutting neighbors, our direct abutting neighbors as well. And we're working with Dickinson Architects who is, they're designing the property to fit the kind of the look and feel of the neighborhood. So not a huge house for that neighborhood, I would say, it's very modest still.
Yes.
Even at 1795 square feet. What else? We've received Board of Health approval for Title V approval for the new existing layout, or for the new layout. And yeah, that's pretty much everything. We're raising the roof six feet total, so that's kind of...
Yeah, you're still, you're at a...
Twenty.
Twenty eight, seven, twenty eight, one...
Twenty eight, eleven, twenty eleven.
Great, um, great, thank you. Any comments from the board?
Seems very straightforward.
Um, anything from you guys are happy with the application? That's great. All right, then I'll go ahead and open up to public comment. All right, sounds good. Well, I think that we all...
I was next door neighbor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you, go ahead.
I approve of this very much, I'm a buttered next door neighbor.
And what's your name?
Rogers, Joe Rogers.
And your address?
20 Tracy Street, Mexi Town.
And you, okay, sounds good. Any other comments? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comment section and I will, I think, go ahead and ask for motion.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should make a comment just based that we've reviewed the criteria under 11.6 and obviously this meets the criteria set forth in there. This is a very, very modest increase in size. I'd almost, you know, sort of on the side suggest that, you know, one might consider whether we ever would change zoning by law to say if you're gonna go up to 2,500 square feet, go for it. Because, I mean, this is, within the town of Concord, this is still, it's still gonna be a very modest home.
Right.
And so with all that, I would move that we grant approval of a special permit to Stephen Keating for a special permit under section 7.1.3, 7.1.5, and 11.6 of the zoning by law. To construct an 811 square foot addition, increase in the gross floor area by more than 50% on a non-conforming lot at 10 Tracy Street with our usual conditions. Which are pretty modest themselves.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Hi. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, let's see, what is it, 718? Okay.
You're golden, yeah.
Yeah, all right, we're gonna go ahead, Mike Bushnell.
Hi.
Hi.
How you doing?
Good.
Hi, I'm Elise Stone, the architect representing Mike Bushnell, who's here with Fiona. This is a similar situation, but larger stuff. So there's, this is up on Mall Road, 1599. The original house was built in 1946, it's a Cape house. And there is a detached barn kind of garage next to it. There should be other photos of that side of the house. And the barn is right to the right of it. So the existing house has about 1,664 square feet and the barn is 355. So the total is 2,700 square feet existing. So again, we do the 50% and by right, we could be 4,058. And it's all here in the narrative, but... So this is, this sits in a double A residence and so it's non, the lot is non-conforming in both the area. So for triple, double A, you need to have 80,000 square feet, this has 76,230 square feet. So it's a little under there and it also is not conforming with the frontage. The exist, the required frontage for a double A is 200 and this has 151. So we are, the proposal is to take the house down, you see where it sits on the lot. And to put a new house there, the new house will also be Cape style to kind of match the houses that kind of sit along that road. And it will be, the living space will be 3,800 square feet, that's the back and the side. So there's the front. Will be 3,800 square feet, but the garage, well, it's kind of an oversized garage, is 700 square feet. So the new total is 4,541, so we're 483 square feet over, you know, the allowable square footage. The height, we're raising it approximately six feet from what is, what is existing, it's still gonna be a Cape. So the front is 27, the back is, you can see there, is close to 30, 29.6 to 30. We're removing, there's a bunch of sheds and the detached garage, we're removing all the sheds in the property and kind of cleaning it up. The one in there, we were told by the neighbors, had about 12 horses, just kind of mess back there. So that'll all be cleared up. And yeah, all the setbacks, it's conforming now and it will be conforming now. And I guess the real thing again is looking at the F A R. So it's such a large lot that by right, with the F A R, not by right because obviously it's a non-conforming lot, but we could build a 14,900 square foot house. Just because it's such a large lot. So that's, that's all being indicated, so.
So I can just show the existing apartment versus... So, yeah, sorry, can we just...
Yeah, so the house now, we'll see the proposed, so all these are coming off, these are all coming down. When we did our square footages, we obviously just, you know, didn't count any of these, we just, Ray came out and did the measurements, he counted, you know, these two items.
Okay.
So and then we're gonna kind of build it to kind of create more of an extended cave, kind of closer to part of the property.
Got it, great, thank you. Any comments from the board, questions? Okay, any comments from either of those? All right, I'll go ahead and open it up to public comment. I'll go ahead and close public comment.
Yeah.
So I think if someone, if we wanna discuss this, again, this seems pretty straightforward to me. If you wanna, whoever is going to potentially give a motion wants to hit on some of the findings. But I don't see that this is out of whack in terms of scale or...
Well, I mean, certainly, it's compared to Lowell Road, it's Lowell Road. It's certainly not, this is certainly not on a scale or anything that you see on the road or immediately heading home.
Do you wanna make motion?
I'm sure, seems to be my night. Last chance, okay. I would move that we grant a special permit to Mike Bushnell under section 7.1.3, 7.1.5, 11.6 of the zoning by law. To demolish the existing 2,700 square foot dwelling and garage and to construct a new 4,541 square foot dwelling. That will increase the gross floor area by more than 50% on a non-conforming lot at 1599 Lowell Road. I think that with respect to 11.6, our basic findings go around the fact that, that this is, the new house in fact is, is also consistent with the neighborhood character. Has the effect of sort of consolidating and cleaning up some things on the lot. Doesn't seem to affect traffic control or any other safety compared to the existing house. And so I think that we've, so would find that it meets the standards of the 11.6.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, 7.6, so we are good. All right, we're gonna move on to the reason that everyone is here, Simon's building permitting. Here's how I would like this to work. We'll have Simon go ahead and present, we will have some discussion among the board, we will then open it up for public comment. But let's first start with the applicant, whenever, once you are ready.
Ready, thank you very much. Good evening, Rich Harrington, engineer from Williams Rogers, Jeff Ruder, Emily DeSimms, representative of the applicant, and Brad Athan for counsel. Thank you for your time tonight, we're back to basically clarify a few items and hopefully close this meeting tonight if we can. It's been a rather very diligent journey, as you can tell as you keep scrolling, get caught on the tunnel. It's a good project. It meets the criteria of your regulations first and foremost, with, as you know, is the first criteria of an engineer. It also takes into account putting the people in this road. Their wants, their needs, their asks, and if we complied those, we did. Yeah, but those were the ones to do that. In addition, we also asked to look at the long range master plan. Very, it's a very well job done with that. And you'll see that the things that we're bringing today to the table will close a gap that we feel that was lacking for this plan to proceed and gain approval from the board. We have a February 12th letter that was submitted by the applicant for Simon's, which was in response to the finance committee letter. And that basically was what was the expected revenue for this project. After taking into account, just to summarize that letter, the applicant itemized the value of each home that he believes it'll sell for, which is hypothetical. Those numbers were already in the reported players for months now, so it's not new information that would need to be reviewed. Based on typical tax rates and the typical numbers that are coming in from students in the respective planning residential developments in this town. That they did a study during this, this application process. Under the aspects, we believe there'll be an initial revenue of over $324,000 after everything said and done. That could be debated up and down, we did also look at your annual report for different school committee items of that nature, so my personal review of his letter and other correspondence was that I think if his information falls within the acceptable ranges. And then when you look at the previous PRD that you approved for the culinary cottages on Bethurst Street. It didn't have this as much detailed information, just basically said that, you know, general, generalness about it, it shouldn't have an impact and that a first floor mass would have less impact on schoolchildren. When you look at our project, we also have master bedroom first floors, which takes you across the entire spectrum within the master plan. So February 12th response to the financial fincom letter relative to what I just spoke about. There was also a February 10th letter from the applicant, which tried to, which updated the board on the improvements to the project and to the the items to comply with the long range master plan. As you know, in the updated plan, what recommendation by the town planner, which will probably review and itemize in detail, and I'll save that to respond as we go. We asked to reduce the impervious area, that was first and foremost one of the asks from the plan of board. During the sidewalk, we arrived in this location, and I have my pointer. Thank you.
Actually, thanks, sorry.
You got your pointer though, right?
I do, we're upper running. Well, we did the sidewalks, there was a park on Highway 10, they came in the gravel path, and then there's also the existing sidewalk at that location. With the existing paths that we have there in that area, those are landscape items. So sidewalks typically are excluded from impervious area calculations in the PRD as you know. We can save additional in the front of what we like. We then looked at the buildings, we had already reduced the impervious area from the B1 and B2 units, so we took six buildings and made them smaller by going to one car garages. We then looked at, we were asked to go from 36 to 34 units, so in previous revisions that the plan of board witnessed and asked for. We removed a duplex building, so that's an impervious area. We also then looked at what's left, so sidewalks, houses, paving. We then took a look at that and with the town planner, we entertained an ask to the fire chief. What you have within your reports are that the fire chief is agreeable to narrow the loop driveway from 24 foot width down to 22. That gives you a couple thousand square foot of additional square footage of savings for the site. The 24 foot width has been maintained at the entrance just because it's a safe thing to do as an engineer. And then we're already at 20 feet on the little stubs off to the left and to the right, so we have scrubbed this playing clean of impervious area for the three aspects, sidewalks. Which you can exclude a little more up the front, just keep the gravel driveway access in the sidewalk. And then we talked about the pavement and the buildings. That would result in going from 32% on the current plan down to 31.4% with the fire truck turning plan that you saw. What will also occur is when now on that two feet, I took this area on the side bordering the park and I moved the pavement that way away from Main Street, so the park area will get larger also by this pavement reduction. Just to inform the board, 50% of this site could be impervious, so we could have 194,000 square feet plus. We're at 122 to 124, depending on whether the board would choose to accept the narrowing of the pavement. As agreed to by the fire chief. Smaller square footages, the plan will close the meeting, the testimony, and they went through and they talked about things. We do have, many of the units are already under 2,000 square feet or 2,500 square feet, which is item 1A on the first page. 64% of the units are less than 2,500 square feet. No one has built that, those many units since Concord River Walk about eight years ago, so through incrementally discussing things with the planner, the director, the C units, and the butters. We've accomplished that goal of providing smaller square footages, we believe.
Just a question, is that square footage number excluding the basements and garages?
For the livings, yes, living area, yes.
Okay.
Which is how they, we were asked to do that.
I think we have both of those.
We, then you do have the doors also with the basements. 1B was incorporation of one car garages. Twelve of the units and one car garage, which represents 35%, and we showed you that table last meeting. We originally had the two car garages, which was the B1 units, it's actually B2. And in good faith, we did that and the applicant already addressed that with going with the B1s. One, two, six of those, and we already had the C1s and the E1s at one car garages. So you have three different dwelling styles that have one car garages on this project, which is very good for this type of development. Use of only electric utilities or no fossil fuel tie-ins or utilities. The applicant has agreed to not put a gas line in, under the pavement. This has been discussed up and down and what they would like to do is to still allow for the transition from, it's 2020. The long range master plan is 2030, 10 years from now, so you it's a building block, this is a great foundation to start with as the town works 10 years down the road to achieve those goals. So we'd like to allow us to have a small propane tanks or either a gas stove or a fireplace, just those, those aspects that might be specific and unique that people prefer. But that was, the applicant was willing to do that. So at the beginning, we asked to lower the HERS rating to achieve the energy efficiency and go to one car garages, so we traveled down that lane. At the end, after the cabbies were closed, we couldn't speak any further, we come to a resolution with that with the board. They asked about the fossil fuels, so we're willing to just eliminate the, talk about the HERS rating and just focus on eliminating the gas hookups and tie-ins from the street. And then we just comply with the newest 2018, and stretch energy code, which you talked, I talked to Ray about, your building inspector this morning. So number three was a 10 to 15 foot natural green car, the connection is part of the open space between adjacent town land, which is up here, and the back property over here. I wrote down 10 feet, we had 15, we were asked to take it off the plan, we're happy to put it back on. This gets into that whole concrete link, long range master plan of having a systems type approach. We had a couple silos along the way where we went this way for one person, had to come back the other way for a different person, so we currently have the system in place as a town going through this first PRD with the long range master plan on the table. So what I believe is, we can provide the 15 feet, which basically is this plan, which you saw, which was the changes plan. And basically, this was the 15 feet they're talking about, that was already in the plan, we're happy to put that back or go down to 10 feet if that's, I don't know, wait, someone got 10 feet. So this is, these are all the changes. We had over, almost 34% common open space before. Now we got a comment that said containment and the league comply with the common open space, just above the 25. We net, we were asked to eliminate certain areas to make the plan better and we have a plan that meets the requirements. Falls within the ranges of each section of the P I D that we'll read through later on as we talk about this project. 1C on page two of the Simon's letter, inclusion of more duplex units or even triplex units. Our original plan had a triplex unit towards Center Village in the Marquis House along Main Street, we were asked to remove that when we applied to changing architects. And our first plan, in front of the plan board, had 11 duplexes. We got rid of that when we went to the one car garage and separated the B1 unit from the B2. So we believe we've already went through that aspect of it and the primary objective was achieved by the reduction in pavement width. And we feel that this is a, just, we feel the current plan meets these objectives for 1C. Two, the use of only electric, so I have to go backwards, sorry about that. So 11 duplexes, the fossil fuels, the duplex, the triplex, the fossil fuel tie-in, we talked about that, the natural green space. And so in conclusion, it's difficult to meet every ask, every request of every board. We digested everything we possibly could while still, as an engineer, having to rely on and prove that the regulations also are met. You'll find in your long range master plan, in the beginning of the book, it's, a lot of those items are aspirational. But we feel that with those goals for the public, talking about that, no fossil fuels in your Article 51, et cetera, without getting into detail. We feel like this meets the criteria for PRD. We can go through the plans, but just to talk about two other aspects, so we have three applications. The planned residential development, which is a special permit, and you know, is alternative pattern development. We also have the earth removal permit, which has certain criteria, which we'll discuss later on. The one criteria about that earth removal is to have the minimum amount of earth removed from the site. The PRD accomplishes that. The current design and the way that it was asked to change, elevate, and adjust makes it even more in compliance with that request from the original application. The long range master plan identified this site as a key location for cluster development. So to be in harmony with the master plan, the applicant proposed a cluster development upon agreement by the landowner. So we meet the compliance in harmony with the master plan by providing the cluster design. We meet the criteria in general or in spirit by having a project that allows flexibility in the regulations to keep more material on the site. Which is the minimum amount off the site when you exceed the threshold, that's what this does. The third aspect is the height. We have a unique and specific situation in this, at this piece of land due to topography, the slope of the site at key locations, and that's within my November letter, we detailed that extensively and we can go through that later. Also, the regulations, we can talk about aspirations 2030, but I have to worry about 2019 to 2020 about what the regulations are today along with the building inspection. We were asked to maintain trees at this location. In order to get down to the bottom of the site, we couldn't break in cutting our grades until we got past that location. We're going down to the left and down to the right, and we talked about, at the same grade, that's not steeper than 5% due to handicap accessibility. The long range master plan has a criteria for walkability, connection of age-friendly properties to town center shops and things of that nature, so the component with the first floor masters in this project and the age-friendly aspect, having those walkways under the 5% meets that criteria. We also had to get from point A to point B, which is how I went down to point C, which is this path along here. So that criteria was another point we met, and then we leveled out at the bottom. We also asked to push more material at the back and put more grading on the backside. All those aspects that are unique to the site, unique to the ask by your master plan, and unique to the criteria results in a request for the height changes. We have the item, the property is listed, and we can talk about that further, but to have this special permit and earth removal, it's minimal to comply with a special permit, the height variance complements that and they go hand in hand. So it's something where we believe this project can write everything together to meet all the needs that we possibly could. And a systematic approach with the neighbors that are close by and you'll see many commentations with the different emails, but we'd like to address anything else that you might have, so I'll let you go through the aspects of asking questions. Talk to the sidewalk if you like, or we can go to the plans.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, here's how I'd like to frame this, so as you mentioned, there are three components to this application, the PRD application, the earth removal, and the variance. I would like to start with what I believe is a threshold question of the variance. As, three of us are lawyers, sorry. As you know,
I'll leave it to you.
Under section 10, there are, of the zoning laws, there are a bunch of requirements, all of which need to be met. That has been pretty much black letter law throughout a lot of different cases in Massachusetts, I'm trying to find my citations here. One of those elements is substantial hardship. The hardship here obviously is, the height needs, they're asking for variance for the height because they have to add some fill-in and change the the different elevations of the land, so that the way that it's being measured gets them over the allowable height, which means that they need to request a variance. The substantial hardship, as you've argued, is, I mean, you can articulate it yourself if you would like.
To comply with the other components of the cluster and the removal, we require that also.
Okay. So the alleged hardship here is if they cannot comply with it, is a different plan, which means that you can't do this plan, which pretty much leads to the fact that you're saying that there is an economic disadvantage to doing this. I've done a bunch of research on this, I don't know if the other lawyers at the table have also done some research on this. The case law to me, I am not saying where we are legally, we have a legal ability to grant those variants, and here is why. Let me cite Kirkwood, which is a 17 Mass Appellate Court. Quote, "Normal deprivation of a potential economic advantage to a landowner qualify as a substantial hardship." This was coming from a case, it was citing another case, but the case that I'm looking at was discussing a developer who had bought a piece of land to build upon and in my mind, this is pretty comparable to this. I am interested to hear what everyone else on the board thinks, but without getting into the rest of this, I don't see it.
While I'm looking, can you point out the houses that are actually an issue here with the dimensional requirements as is? Excuse me?
It's just, I showed you that height table, I pointed out the players.
Sure. Yes, it just basically took this table here, and they call them, just to... Yes, it just basically took this table here, you know, out of the column just to, um,
Building fourteen to twenty require a height exceeds, exceeding of just of the five feet. A duplex twenty-one and twenty-two is ten point five feet, which is again, it's across the footprint. I went along with the, the economic part of it because that's what the applicant was telling me. But everything I wrote about hardships and things like that are written, is written in text format. So I would like to retract my agreement with the economic part of it because it felt like I was just agreeing with a different part of this, not just the specific regulation.
So you can go ahead and articulate what the hardship is if you.
If I may, ma'am, if you're. I'm Mr. Brad Lys, I'm the attorney for the applicant. If I could go through the elements and the various with you, I mean, we've kind of been around it. And I think that Richard's given you some elements of that in the, in the read for, reason for it. I started looking at the bylaw itself and I looked at the definition of height. And I see that you have a height, a starting point, uh, the current natural grade. And I understand that's probably done, uh, for the reason that you don't want perched houses up on, on filled land. You don't want to create unsightliness, uh, you don't want to block views of others. You don't want to have one neighbor looking down on another. I can see the, the good reasons for having this sort of a definition. However, if you grant relief here, none of those concerns of which the zoning exists would be violated. Uh, so I'd like to go through the elements if I could.
Thanks, go ahead.
First on the unique due to the shape of topography of the site. The site surely is unique, uh, has an undulating grade, dropping significantly down towards the rear. The rear portion is of course wetland. So we have a slope issue, uh, which is the, uh, the topographic issue that meets that first criteria. The planning board recognized that situation as did the February eleventh letter from the town planner. And the lot is also uniquely situated by rare tracks, wetlands and the commercial properties. So all of those factors I think go into the uniqueness factor. The answer substantial hardship. The hardship does result from the unique features. It is the slope, the topography itself that gives rise for the need for the variance. The way it is calculated because of the sloping topography. We have a site here of over eight acres. If relief is not, if relief is not granted, it could not be a practical development of this land. I think that's, that's the crucial issue. Uh, it is not, and I, I agree with the chair that you can't argue a variance because you want profit. That's not a justification. You can't argue prior expenses as basis for a profit. That's not the argument being made. It's basically the set is unique, that uniqueness gives rise to the need for height variance to be able to build on it. And I, I also like to cite a couple of points. It's consistent with the character, our objective is consistent with the character of the neighborhood. To attempt to level whole site is impossible to, to avoid any kind of a, a grade issue. And I'd like to quote a couple of quotations if I may. Of course, have expressly recognized that a board can justify relief on sloping, on the topography issue. Uh, and I can give the board copies if you want, but Joseph versus Board of Appeals of Brookline. And, and the level of proof that's involved in a case upholding a variance regarding steepness of slope, the land court said a lesser showing of hardship is required for dimensional variance than for a use variance. So it can't have different levels of hardship to meet the criteria. And that's Bruno versus Chumps, the zoning board of appeals. An upholding grant of variance, the Supreme District Court stated that, quote, need only show that without relief, it used to be economically impractical and not economically feasible to meet the zoning standards. It goes on to say the plaintiffs argue, and this is the plaintiffs here were opposing the relief granted by the board. Plaintiffs argue that no variance should be granted unless the property would be virtually unusable without a variance. We reject the proposition that a variance is unwarranted if any other possible use can be made of the site. So they recognize the fact that uses have a higher requirement by way of the substantial hardship. And they do recognize that it is not a total inability to use the land. It's a difficult economically unfeasibility can justify it. Going on to the remaining elements, if I may, substantial deference to public good won't derogate from intent purpose. Allowing the variance requested will not result in any effect off site as far as the variance is concerned. Buildings will be low as a consequence. This is not a, a situation where you have a very high building. When it's done, it's going to look very nice. They're going to feed into the topography and to be consistent with the neighborhood, which is an important factor. No shadow impacts involved, no blocking of views, rare tracks are right behind, so it won't affect anybody back there. No material impact on the butter is due to the variance and does not change the character of the district by virtue of the relief granted. And we believe it does not violate the purposes of the zoning as, as they exist. These houses will not be ugly, rise on a platform, uh, and they'll actually be isolated by virtual topography itself. So that's the other part of this, the setback on the lot, you actually have trouble seeing them from Main Street as it goes down in the back, you want, they're, they're down in the below area. And they'll be relatively height, height rope among themselves. So the one house next to the other will not have an unusual change in the, in the grade. So we think it's the unique circumstances giving rise to the hardship. The hardship is not being able to practically use the site, not a profit issue, but practically use the site for its own purpose of residential. So that's, that's our question. Thank you.
Some comments about that? I don't know if anyone else wants to go.
I really love and ask a question. So, um, have you looked at whether or not, if you did a regular subdivision of this property, would you be able to put houses on here without violation of the hybrid?
Yes. There's four or five that will need some relief because under the subdivision rules and regs, you don't need a variance. The planning board can grant relief. We can build on, on the four or five, the four or five that we need relief, that I think it'd be like, is it like twenty foot high roofs? Nice, yeah. But a majority of the conventional subdivision does not need any relief.
So I think that cuts to the heart of it. And I'd like to say that I am not commenting on PRD versus subdivision at this point. This is, in my mind, a pure legalistic reading of this. I understand about losing the substantial hardship not meaning that there's any possible, I, I understand your case law. I don't think it applies here. If you can build a twenty-two unit subdivision without this variance, then I would find it very hard to go and say that this is substantial hardship, that you can't build the extra twelve.
And you should take that vote now. We'll save you a lot of time.
Well, that's, I mean, I'd like to have a discussion, but that's.
We're not going to go any further.
Thank you.
I, you know, in looking at, and I haven't done detailed research into the case law, but my understanding is, yeah, there is a reasonable alternative available. It is hard to find that there's substantial hardship. So if we're, if we're saying that the subdivision plan is a reasonable alternative here, I, I, I follow your, your reason there.
Yeah.
I'm totally, I, I've got the subdivision plan that is, uh, up here on the screen and I've been looking at it. And I, I agree with that.
Before you walk out on this, because like I said, this is not a comment on the PRD use of, of this land. So I understand if your position is take a vote, you want us to either reject this or, or not. But we could think about withdrawing and, and looking at those. Right, do you, Jim, do you have any comments?
It's not up to the applicant to.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
I'm not the guard.
The, the board can finish their deliberation.
Right, yeah.
But there's really no reason to go any further and waste everyone's time.
Well, let's, I, I would love to hear what Jim has to say, so let's. Jim, Jim, the third lawyer on the board, go ahead.
And just, just, just a question.
Yes.
How is the hardship different here than the variance you granted on Highland Street?
So number one, there's no precedent setting with.
I get that, but I'm just trying to understand the differences.
So are you able to, you, well, I'm not going to speak to that because it's not before us. That, that's the bottom line. That was, it wasn't, I wasn't on that. I'm, I'm just not going to speak to it. This is, it's, it's own unique situation. Jim.
Well, one of the, excuse me, one of the issues I think we face, just as a general rule, is the difference between, uh, per, special permits and variances. Um, and it's a big, just for the people in the audience who haven't studied the zoning bylaw code, which really you ought to do some, just for kicks, but it's, but. But the difference is, is that the fact is that special permits are really, uh, granted, are, are really granted quite often by the board. There, that it's really thought of as a notion that, and I'll take you as an example, the first thing that we had tonight. You've got a rule, you can't increase your, your lot size without a, excuse me, you can't increase your house size beyond a certain thing if you're on a non-conforming lot. But people can see all sorts of reasons why that might be reasonable. And so special permits are sort of given for the notion that they will be granted if criteria meet. Matt, we have a special permit here in front of us with respect to the PRD itself. Um, and we grant special permits for period of all time. Variances, um, are thought of to be, um, much harder to get generally. And in addition to the case law that everyone's been citing here, our, our, uh, zoning bylaw itself uses this, uses a standard, um, that it is, um, that the literal enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial otherwise, and the desire of lease may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. I would note that, for example, that's the language that we use when we get to whether or not you can exceed the so-called floor area ratio, the anti-mangialization bylaw that was passed by town meeting a few years ago. And it's deliberately done because basically what the town is saying is, you know, zoning board of appeals, you and only you can deal with variances, not the planning board. And you and only you are held with this criteria, which is a very, very, very strict criteria. I think, um, I'm not going to comment, uh, much on the, um, uh, variance that we did grant with respect to the single property on Highland, which is a very, very small lot. Had much less, um, had many less alternatives, uh, to what was done. But I think that the applicant will recall that, um, the board struggled quite mightily with that decision. Um, and we worked very, very hard on the, um, on the, uh, writing of it to make sure that we felt like it really did come into this whole thing. So first statement is there's a big difference between special permits and variances. And we really just can't as a board take variances lightly. I think the second question here is that, and while I've heard the applicant, when we look at this, uh, the, 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 I've heard the applicant suggest that perhaps they would go back to a subdivision, um, rather than to try to look at whether or not they could create this, um, plan, um, without violating the height requirement or without violating the height requirement in so many aspects, et cetera, et cetera. And I appreciate that the applicant has the full right to do, um, what the applicant, um, would like to do. I do think that, um, one of the issues that we, so I would say that as a general rule, we're, we're in a very tough position here. We're in a tough position as a board, um, in terms of going further. Uh, one of the things that we did think about a lot when we were in the, that one other situation was the fact that the, um, the alternative in that one small lot, in that one particular circumstance, uh, would have in fact created a house that was really quite different from the character of the rest of the neighborhood on, um, Highland Street. And we had a lot of, um, citizens, um, who, uh, came before us and made it very clear that, um, they felt that there was a detriment to the neighborhood of forcing the kind of house to be built that would meet the criteria in that particular case. And I think that was one of the things that we, we looked at. So you had a sort of situation where the, um, financial hardship was, uh, perhaps easier to see with one house on one small lot as opposed to alternative here, uh, in the subdivision. But you also had a neighborhood that was looking at the criteria of the neighbor itself. I mean, the house they were proposing to put up was essentially a very similar house to maybe the houses on Highland Street, which has, which is a street which has a unique character to it. So I guess my only question here is whether or not we, um, before thinking about that area, would at least like to hear public comment on the issue of the height and the variance, just to understand, um, where people are on that. Or if that would even matter in this particular case. I think it's, it's a hard, it's a very hard sell just because of the economic alternative.
Yes. I mean, I am happy to open, um, for public comment to, for this one issue, the variance, um, right now. Again, to me, this is pretty, almost black letter. I don't see granting this with there being, I, I think it's, it's a self-defeating argument that they can build a subdivision. I, I'm, I'm where I am. I'm happy to listen to public comment if others won't.
Yeah, I, I, I think we should, should, we should.
Yeah, all right. So again, let's, we'll open the, the meeting up to public comment, again, just on the variance issue right now. Uh, we'll come back to other ones, but are there any comments? Okay, well, then.
Good night.
Sure.
They talk up and down the mess with silo and systems. This height is a silo conversation that goes against your master plan. Right now you have a warrant article that would allow thirty-five foot, to exceed the thirty-five foot on the town meeting warrant article. The reason why it's on is because your master plan encourages updating your regulations to allow the cluster, which you pointed out for this property, I mean, you being the town, to allow that to achieve. Again, didn't talk about the height, but again, it's, it's a silo effect where it was recognized, we spent months with the planning board. They recognize it also and they have a proposed rule change at the town meeting. I respect your view, that's fine. We can reduce half these houses by putting them back on Main Street, just like the conventional one. We had them closer to the road. We had them without heights that needed variances. So it's a, it's a public detriment. The detriment to the public is that we would cut the grade closer to Main Street. We would cut all the trees and then we would start cutting the grade down so that we wouldn't, um, have a problem with the height. And then the open space would go in the back on the railroad tracks. And then we would have to remove more earth removal from the site. And that's, that's, it's just a cause and effect. So the systems approach is if we do come back with a subdivision, it's going to have more fill removal than the PRD does. So that's a separate category, but just to kind of force it over.
Right. I, I absolutely, I understand that's why I'm trying to tell you that it's not the PRD that I'm speaking on. I am, this is a specific thing you've asked for. You've asked for a variance. There's specific standards for the variance. Does it mean that there is a unintended consequences with other things if we can't just grant a variance? Of course, but that's where we are. To me, that's the law. That's the reading of it. Again, I don't know if other people have any con, they were, I'm gonna go, actually I closed the public comment unless anyone, right, I'm gonna close the, um, oh, I'm sorry.
Did I have a question, uh, have a question? It's really a matter of education to me, um, and I mean, I'm asking for a finding on it. In the PRD bylaw, it talks about the height being thirty-five feet. Elsewhere in the bylaw, there's a paragraph in section six to eleven that takes out the hardship requirement, if I'm reading it properly, under a special permit criteria. And I wonder if that might be applicable. And if so, you could make such a finding that would solve that particular issue to allow the master plan to go forward the way I think people want to, to have a cluster concept. It's on page thirty-six of my copy. It says the board may grant relief from an above definition of the height of a building in, and I, I don't know which residential district you were under.
C.
C.
You know which were under which.
C.
President C.
Okay. Then C, provided the board finds a literal application and includes all the elements for a variance except not the hardship. And I think that's what you're also trying to do with one of your zoning changes is which was referring to. And if you make a finding that in fact this section, which is the, like the fifth paragraph down as you found it on, on the six to eleven on page thirty-six, if you make a finding that can apply to a PRD, is it to still perceive the PRDs?
It's right here.
It's right here. So is that, is.
Available.
No, reasonable alternative as well as opposed to whatever the variance is. Which is, sorry, we're not trying to cut everybody out. So what he's referring to, the language that the, I'm sorry, I've lost your name, Mr.
Brad Latham.
He's right, Mr. Latham. The 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 thing that Mr. Latham's return, referring to in the height restriction says that the board can grant relief from a definition of a height of a building in Resident C if it finds that the literal application of this requirement would be unreasonable because there are no reasonable alternatives available, and that the desired relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the neighborhood and without derogating from the intent and purpose of the bylaw, which is, it's got its own problems, I suppose, as it heads you to eleven seven. Section eleven seven, which is the general relief from variance, says that says that you should grant a variance where the little literal enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw would involve would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, and that desired relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent and purposes of the bylaw. So there is, you know, it's it's certainly a difference, it's certainly a difference with respect to the, although it gets to the idea of of no reasonable alternatives.
And that's in the eleven seven, so you're back to variance, so you're bumped right back into the same section.
Right, and granted without substantial, that, I mean, it it's a, that the literal enforcement would revolve, result in substantial hardship, and this one is the literal enforcement would, that that there would be no, that in the literal enforcement would be unreasonable because there were no reasonable alternatives. So no reasonable alternatives versus financial hardship.
Right, I I agree, it takes out the hardship. The reasonable alternatives are there, and I guess then becomes a question whether a reasonable alternative is in the best interest of the town, or reasonable, best interest to the applicant. And it seems to me that the whole philosophy I've seen in land planning and concrete has been to try and use clusters and save open space. So it seems a reasonable, is there, is it a reasonable alternative here to have a subdivision? Or is it better for everyone, the community included, to have a cluster?
I mean, your argument assumes that this is also the best, that the way that you have it structured is the best and only cluster development that's possible, and we think that a cluster, I mean, there's a lot of assumptions going into that, and I guess, I understand what you're saying and how you're trying to move it forward. I I'm not incredibly comfortable, and I also think this refers back, I mean, it does, refers back to the variance section, so I I don't see where it gets us. And I think you are right, we are in a in a difficult position because I would like to discuss other parts of this. However, to me, this is a threshold issue on this specific application, and it's where I am with it. To other people.
Yes, Elizabeth. So it's very rare that the board asks for input from town council during a deliberation of a project, but that is something that I can put the request to the town manager to see if he'd be willing to have at least some input from council on on that issue of having the board make a finding under section six to eleven instead of a variance under eleven seven.
I guess I'm not comfortable on the fly kind of restructuring like this. Do you have any thoughts?
What do you have to say?
Because people.
Actually, can you point me to where, I'm trying to look at the town warrant right now, can you point me to the issue of the, where the warrant is being changed?
The planning board has a town meeting warrant to make various changes to the PRD bylaw. And one of those changes was to include that waiver provision for height.
So I'm in the PRD bylaw, but where where are we there?
I mean, that being said, it's not.
I know, I understand, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to understand what we, where we, what we're doing with this.
All right, so the PRD amendment is.
I'm, I got the PRD amendment, I'm just starting to find where it changed from this.
The right, board may grant relief, ten point two point seven.
Height. So now we're back to derogating from the intent and purpose of the bylaw again effectively.
I mean, the fact that the change is being asked for, maybe it's.
It's ten point two point seven, it's reasonable.
Yeah, thank you, thanks very much.
But again.
So again, for those of you who didn't bring your bylaw, or your town warrant.
Or your warrant. There you go, there's the warrant.
So se- section ten point two point seven currently says, I was going.
This is in the PRD section.
This is the, which is the PRD section. Says, currently says, the maximum permitted height of any structure within PRD shall not be more than thirty-five feet. And there's a measurement in another part. So the proposed bylaw change by the planning board would say that the maximum permitted height of any structure should not be thirty-five feet, same words. And then adds a sentence that says, the board may grant relief from the maximum height of a building provided the board finds that the desired relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the neighborhood and without derogating from the intent or purpose of this bylaw. Which, quite frankly, is a little bit circular because the intent and purposes of bylaw is also eleven point seven, which is, which is the variance.
Right. And you are talking about a purpose amendment, which is not even on the warrant yet.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
Well, it's on the warrant.
Is it on, oh, it's on final form amendment.
It goes back to the purpose and intent of the bylaw is to lessen congestion on streets, conserve health to secure safety from fire, flood, panic, or other dangers, provide adequate light air, prevent overcrowding of land, avoid undue concentration of population, encourage housing, so that's the purpose and intent.
Of this particular, of the zone, of the.
Of the bylaw.
Of the, of the PRD.
Well, no, of of the bylaw, all of those things that are listed in the purpose. All right, here, I I think we're just gonna keep going around on this. I think we should take a vote on this and then see where we are, and we can do that, I assume, we can take just this one vote and then discuss with the applicant what we want to have happen, that or what they would like to have happen next.
So so the board has an application in front of them with various variants. So as far as the application that's before you, you have, you have, your options are to, you can deny an application, approve an application that's submitted, or approve an application with modifications and conditions.
But we're, there are three different things that we're voting on here, so I.
Well, you're 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 voting on one application that includes all of those sections of the zoning bylaw.
Right, but in order for that one application to be approved, all three items need to be, needs to be approved.
Yeah, but I think she's, yeah, that's true, but I'm wondering if what Elizabeth is also saying is.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure, that's true, but.
No, I mean, you would have to.
I gotta be honest, you haven't gotten me any closer to this.
No, I understand that, I'm just asking a different question, which is, I think Elizabeth is saying is, if we voted, if we voted.
We can't just vote on it.
To, if we voted to, no, if we voted to deny the variance, we would effectively be denying the permit, which would mean that the applicant would not have any option to refile with some.
No, the the, so the the board can deny the variance for those homes, whether the applicant can build a home that doesn't require a variance for those specific numbers. I don't, I don't know. I don't know if that means it's a different type of dwelling, a different type of architecture, or if, you know, there's less units, or it's, you know, modified in some way, I can't, I can't speak to that. I can't, I can't speak to whether not granting the variance, but granting the rest of the project with modification, how that would change the project, and whether that's feasible if a different architectural were employed, or if there was some different measure of grading. If the board were not to grant this special permit for the earth removal, then yes, this project would not go forward. You cannot get the ADA compliance and the five percent slopes and and all of those.
Right, so what you're saying is, we could, we could grant the PRD, say they don't have the variance, they could try to figure out how to fit these houses, these, what is it, eighteen houses in here without a variance. I'm not comfortable that we just say that without looking at how that would work in terms of a totality of a plan. I, again, don't know where the rest of the board is, I'm, I'm not there on the variance. I'm not getting closer, I don't see it, so I don't know if.
Well, I don't, I'm not necessarily there on the variance, I'm I'm a little concerned about the extent to which, I guess I'll say the following, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not super enamored of this particular plan for a bunch of reasons, including that it, that while it has some really, really good features in in terms of this, the frontage on Main Street and keeping that area before the before the slope relatively clear, not relatively clear of houses, I guess, there'd be two or three down there. I think there's some advantages to that, I think there's some advantages to having the homes sort of hidden, if you will, behind the slope. I am sympathetic to folks who are concerned about the impact of a subdivision and those people who have have made that point, citizens who've been supportive of this. I'm concerned about it because I think that it, to my mind, still seems to me to be an attempt to put perhaps more homes in the space than is really that, too many homes in the space so that the ability to do some things with that property that would be really sort of, could make it special and interesting within the neighborhood could could really come out. I mean, it could be a much better project now. That's not up to, that's not up to, that's not the applicant in front of us, but that is a concern of mine. And I think that, so it's, it's a, it's, it's a troubling situation for me. I also think there's not enough smaller homes in town, and while some of these are bigger homes in terms of, if you think about it in terms of living space, they're all under three thousand square feet, and many of them, I think more than half of them are probably under twenty-two hundred square feet, twenty-three, twenty-five hundred square feet.
And then you mentioned earlier, it was being modest.
Right, twenty-five hundred square feet, so I think those have a bunch of advantages to them. I'm also mindful of the fact that we've got a variance issue, which I think would be difficult for any of us to get around for this particular project. And and yet we're faced with the notion that town meeting in two months, three months, whatever it is, April, may, in its wisdom, choose to adopt these regulations, which might make that much more feasible within this area. So I came here tonight not prepared to make any act, take any actions in part because there've been so many filings and modifications and other things in such a short period of time related to this meeting, including the applicant making several changes at almost exactly the same time that the town planner had provided a memo to the board, which meant that the town planner was not able to comment on the changes that the applicant had suggested for our edification. So I was, you know, I was prepared to sort of say, let's put this thing off for, you know, a a month or two and try to figure out what's actually before us so that we can, you know, read everything and do everything. So I'm struggling with the fact of whether or not we would feel different about it if it were a month or two, and maybe the applicant doesn't care because it's too long. But, you know, whether we'd feel different in a month or two or three if we had the town meeting in front of us, or we're not. I don't, based on what we have, I, you know, if asked to vote on this, Elizabeth, I'm not, I'm not, I don't, I don't see this as a situation where we could, we could grant this particular variance. And I'm not, I don't see so much benefit to the PRD as opposed to the subdivision that I would, you know, you know, try to, you know, turn myself into a pretzel to try to get there. So so in answer to your question, if we're pushed on this, this this meeting, yeah, I'm not gonna come out in a favorable way, and therefore it's gonna be very difficult because I'm sure that the applicant nodding over there is not going to, not gonna go back to the drawing board and see if he can make these eighteen houses, or however many it is, meet the particular height requirement.
Physically, it's physically impossible.
Well said, I think where we are.
Just so you know, the real hardship is the zoning.
Okay.
And I think Ray would agree with this, because you're starting from a natural grade, and because we have to fill so much in the back.
We understand that.
That's, that's the true hardship.
What, we understand. All right, here, you'll stop me for a second, I'm gonna go ahead and say, Jim, I agree with everything you said, I think you said it eloquently. I think that I would ask, although you're already saying no, whether you would continue this and and work to get it closer to something that we would consider, and in my mind, that's getting rid of the variance request. And I'm not the applicant, so I can't make that decision, that's for you. I guess you, their choices are to withdraw without prejudice, to ask for continuance, or to ask us to vote, correct?
I'm asking you to vote.
So.
And if you don't want to vote unless we've had a fuller discussion.
What are you saying?
Yeah.
Oh, and and so the the board can close, close the public hearing, and you can deliberate on your decision tonight, or you can continue it to the, you know, next month to, you know, deliberate on your decision or provide.
Without the applicant agreeing to that.
It's your public hearing, so.
All right, so we can continue that.
Well, you can't public, you're not continuing public hearing, continuing.
Continuing the deliberations.
The deliberating, yes.
Um, you can, you can get public comment or close public comments and deliberate and provide me direction to draft a decision for you to review next month, or there's quite a few options.
Yes. Right.
I mean, I completely, you know, got what Jim's comments and his consensus, and if that's a consensus of the board, then I, and you wish to provide some direction on the decision, I can, I can do that as well.
I, I mean, I guess, I brought the variance up as a threshold issue because I also don't want to waste everyone's time going over something that has no chance of passing. So if that's where we are in the variance, then it seems to me it's, to me, it still remains as the as the threshold issue to sit here and discuss a plan that we know isn't going to be voted on by us, seems a little.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I appreciate you having raised it because I think that is a sensitive spot. It requires unanimous vote of this board, I can very clearly see the sentiment, I've done this for a few years. It seems to me that the most prudent thing to do is to have the vote on the variance. Because we can't change the plan in its configuration that now exists and not need a variance.
So if we vote on the variance and then the entire application falls, is what, we can't single that out and say that we are voting on the variance.
That I'm not entirely clear on.
But if they.
Well, what do we wanna, what do we wanna have challenged in court, right?
Right, that's my point, right, do we want to have our points laid out, so if it's, if it's shown, right, that's where I'm struggling with. If we're challenged on this, and we haven't talked about any of it.
So that's, that's, that's where I feel you, you need guidance from town council on how you would formulate your decision.
So why don't we continue it, get that guidance on town council about if we're denying this one part of this, what happens to the rest of it? Because we didn't, we didn't, yeah, can you, please, thanks. We haven't even gotten to the substance of the PRD, so if we say this decision, oh, we don't like the variance, we deny it all, and then we're challenged because we didn't even look at the PRD, that's what you're saying, right, Robbie? Like, we haven't even looked at the elements of it.
Yeah, I I mean, I I actually do. Yeah, I I mean, I I actually do think of this as a, as a whole package of an application.
Mm-hmm.
Because, you know, yes, there's black litter law, but there is some discretion for the board, otherwise the light has a fork, right?
Mm-hmm. There's less discretion in the variance because there's a special permit.
There is, there is maybe a much narrower band of discretion there.
Right, right.
But do we really know how we would want to exercise that discretion if we talk about that one narrow sliver of it in the absence of the whole package, I guess? Is that
Right.
Is that something that we should be talking about when we make that decision?
Right, right.
Then, Madam Chair?
Yes.
If if it makes it easier, and it's it's the suggestion was made by my client, that if you vote to deny the variance,
Mm-hmm.
we'll request a withdrawal without prejudice, the application for the PRD. That would clear that.
I think we should.
Since that that was my question, because if they, if they withdraw, they can come back and.
If if it was a strong vote, you're.
Actually, actually, that's, we can't withdraw that for contractual reasons, so.
Okay.
But.
Well, then.
But but we will agree that if you do the variance, then we'll call it a night. Save everyone a lot of time.
Well, so we, uh if we, if we do this.
Yes.
Do we have a, do we have a couple minutes to talk?
Go ahead.
Yeah. It's a lot of legal stuff there.
Let's, let's take five minutes. Let's take five minutes.
Yeah.
Um alright, tell me, Elizabeth, when you're, uh, you're good to go. Okay, here's um, oh, yes, go ahead.
Our request is you vote on the, on the variance request, which I think anywhere that's going to go and file that decision. We would ask for continuance on the, on the two special permits. Because if you deny the variance, we've got to look and see, is there some other way to deal with this? So we ask for continuance on the PRD public hearing and on the earth removal special permit, and you take action on variance request.
So I think this is exactly where we were. We weren't sure about withdrew, with taking it apart that way.
Yeah, and. Yep, and I, and I would get guidance from the town council.
Yes, um what I suggest um is that we continue this in order to give um everyone up here maybe a chance to to think and maybe do a little legal research, if you would like. Um and we get some guidance from town council. What do we need to ask for specifically now, or can we ask? I do we need to give you our request right now, what we would like to ask town council?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, great. So would you like to articulate in the
Well, I think we need, I think there's, there's two issues. There's two issues before us right now. Um one is whether or not uh we're sufficiently comfortable with the um case law that some of us have read and others of us have not had an opportunity to read yet given the major ones came up. Um to to be in a position where we can take a formal vote. Um and the second is, is that um we need some guidance from town council, I suppose, on two issues. Um one is is guidance with respect to the very question in front of us, the standards on the variance in this particular case. But the second, um a- a- and and in particular, what I would say, Elizabeth, is the interaction between uh section six point, whatever it is.
Six to eleven.
Six to eleven and and eleven point seven and the difference in words.
I I guess I'm not as convinced about that point because they're not applying under that. I mean, that's not how the application was presented to us. I don't know if there's any downside to have you look at it, but.
Well, I'd I'd like to ask about that because we have two standards within the bylaws. This is me, so.
No, 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 go ahead.
And my, and the second one is, is that what's the impact of um a vote to deny the uh variance on the status of the remainder of the permit? Is it, is it?
Whether you can pull.
Whether you can pull it apart, or do you have to vote on the entire
Okay. Okay.
special permit itself. But but until we, I think from.
Explain to me, explain to me, sorry, we, explain to me a little more. You want him to explain, even though they're applying for variance, if they're not applying under this section for this specific part, you're, you want to know.
I want to understand, oh, I think I just, I mean, look, this is a facts and circumstances issue. There's a lot of potential issues here and I don't know honestly whether I think I'll say at bottom that we have a recommendation from the planning board with respect to whether or not we should grant this permit that the applicant has made some effort to meet the particular conditions that were required, but has certainly has, but I don't know that the planning board, if they were asked, would say that it's gotten as far as they hoped that they would, the applicant has got as far as they hoped that they could. And there's been eloquent discussions here about that we've tried to do the best we can and 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 we're within the, we we believe that we're within the, or they believe that they're within the four corners of the agreement. So I take that on point. Um I think that um I think that there is a general sentiment that a um that aid, some PRD may, well, this may be a site that that is a PRD is um could have a lot of advantages as compared to the subdivision. So I think that um and given the fact that the planning board spent eighteen months and ten meetings and whatever, and all of these people spent all the time, energy and effort to try to think about this issue. I think there's some, some relevance to try to think about whether or not this can live another day. Um and I think Mr. Lathan made a interesting point about the way these sections interact because the very height requirement that they're talking about is also a height requirement that could, that we have different standards for. And I just, I would love to understand um if in fact the only way that we can look at this is under section eleven point seven, or if we have some, some flexibility. They know, this, this board made an, an effort, a hard effort really, to try to get a variance in the, granted in the one case um that was mentioned. And I don't think that's precedent by any stretch of the imagination, or ever will be precedent, because these are case by case basis, but I just think that it's, you know, what we're trying to do here is see if there's a way forward that is um in the best interest of the town and acceptable to the developer. And I think if we can take another get as much information as we can over the course of the next month and and come together and make that judgment, that's maybe the best we can do.
I'll buy that. I I, so I think that makes sense. So, you know, sorry.
No, I totally agree with that. I mean, it's a, it's a.
So we're asking, asking for those two issues from town council, we're going to continue this, so.
I think we're gonna, we're gonna move to continue the public hearing, right?
Yep, so, um, so what I, well, I will um frame this request to the town manager. Um would ask that, you know, at least
Two.
one of the lawyers review, review this um before I send it, the request to the town manager.
And I hope it's clear what we're attempting to do here.
Good.
We appreciate your effort. It's, it's a difficult position and we respect that. And as one comment, Mr. Mr. Smith, when we, we did get the variance,
Sorry.
We're, we're.
stared me in the eye and said, don't tell me this is a precedent on the PRD.
Hey, nice.
So I, I had to be a coo, okay. Right in the eye.
Yeah, I see, and it worked. Alright, so, um, okay, so you're gonna frame the request, you'll send it for review to someone?
Anybody volunteer?
Well, you should, I think you should send it, I mean, also again, for everybody else, we we can't ever do anything like an email together because of the town meeting laws, so she'll probably send the var, send her information to one or more of us.
One member.
She'll, and she'll take, what is it, just one? You can only send one?
You can't send two separately to.
Um I, with a, uh, only a board of three.
Okay, okay, we'll send it to, yes, okay, we'll figure that out.
Well, I mean, I'm chair, so I'll send it.
Okay.
I'll send it to.
Send it, Elizabeth, perfect. And um so I'm gonna move that we uh continue the public hearing until uh March twelve, thirteen?
March twelve?
Thirteen? Thir- twelve?
March twelve.
Twenty-nine days in September, in, yes, in February.
Seven thirty.
Twenty-nine days in September too, by the way, just.
So we've already had to uh set the agenda for the applications that came in. Um so the earliest would be seven thirty, on March twelve.
Perfect. So I continue the public hearing to March twelfth and seven thirty and further seek uh town council's advice with respect to the matters that we've uh talked about here and ask that the town planner provide that draft information to the chair uh so that we have it in order before it goes out.
For a second, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thanks all. I think that we expressed, we as a members of the zoning board of appeals who were there at the time expressed various comments about what we liked or didn't like or all that sort of stuff, but we didn't um, we did not take a formal vote
Okay.
um in support of them. And um I noted, I noted in, when I was reading the warrant uh here, that there are several comments that said the, the planning board and the zoning board of appeals felt that, or thought that. And that may actually be true in terms of the members of the zoning board of appeals, but I wasn't sure if it was actually the zoning board of appeals, so I was kind of hoping that we could fix that up in case anyone ever asked.
Um I think that's good. I think um also I just wanted to see if people had read them and had comments. I mean, I I, I mean, we're sticking with the PRD. Have people looked at them yet? Robbie, have you looked at them yet?
No, I, I did, I noticed you, I think we were on.
Sorry, I won't judge you, I won't judge you. No, because I, I mean, you, so for example, PRD, it it makes the permit granting authority the planning board and not the zoning board. So um whether we think that's a good idea or not, I think there are varying um opinions on that. I guess we're seeing in this case, the specific PRD, that it's not necessarily a bad thing to have a check on um one committee. Uh I understand the desire for applicants to not go around and around and around and around, and maybe that can be addressed. I know we talked, Elizabeth, about whether it would be possible for a chair of a committee or a member of a committee, say the planning board and the zoning board to get together with an applicant to discuss things in concept without violating open meeting laws, with, to kind of make the process a little smoother. I would be more in favor of that than I would be taking away from us completely. Now, I know I don't have a say in this, but I guess my question is, do we feel strongly enough about any of these to make a statement at town meeting, right, as a board? We could.
Um so the explanation that's in the warrant, you know, I'll I'll apologize for it because the, the joint meeting you had, I came away with a, a different opinion than what's currently being discussed. Um so that's entirely my fault and I believe members of the planning board came away with that same opinion. So that's why the explanation got written. But
Yeah.
but regardless, um i- as far as just starting with the PRD, um I think part of the problems or the tensions with you know, the, you know, the application before you tonight um is specifically because it was eighteen months and ten meetings with the planning board um and the applicant knowing that they're going through and all they're getting is a recommendation to this board. So when issues and concerns and, you know, were discussed between the applicant and town staff and the planning board, it's, well, you know, those are recommendations, we'll make some improvements, but not, not measurable improvements as if the planning board in the very beginning said, we feel this is too dense. I, I think more measurable changes are made in the project when it's before the board that has the ability to grant it or deny it. And I think that's, I think that's why this project has gone on for so long. The planning board attempted and attempted and attempted to make, have measurable changes in the project.
That being said, I know Matt Johnson said specifically he didn't meet with applicants and wouldn't meet with applicants.
No, and and the planning, and the planning board or board of appeals has never, ever met conceptually.
And that's something, yeah.
Because of the pu- of the public process and public meeting process.
But I'm, I'm not sure. That's something where I'd like to, I I personally would like, just in, in the future, even beyond this, in terms of applicants getting, going around and around and around. And you can tell me in your experience, Jim, if this is, I don't see that as violating anything if there is no quorum and it avoids eighteen months of you know, I've, I don't see what the, the problem is with, I think it would be more helpful to an applicant to sit down and have these discussions not eighteen months after they've been through everything. It's two different points. But I know we talked about whether or not that is true. Um I think the um what I've had conversations with people outside of this board, it seems to be something that is done other places, so.
Well, it's, it's done in other communities where they don't have professional staff.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, you know, the professional staff met with this applicant probably four times before they ever filed.
Right.
Right.
So on top of the ten meetings with the planning board, so it's, it's not, i- it's not.
So having the planning board be the final I mean, I don't see that we're getting anywhere. I mean, we should talk about this application in general, but I I, I, I don't know, what do other people think about taking it away from the zoning board?
Well, so let me just report, I think I was the only person at that meeting, right?
I think you were.
Were you there?
Yes.
Oh, Theo was there, okay.
Oh, you were, okay.
So Theo, you can correct me if I'm wrong. We, it was an interesting meeting to begin with, but um I think that we, that we discussed um I think that we discussed three warrant articles that are relevant here.
Mm-hmm.
We discussed some other things about accessory uses and stuff, but I'm not seeing those in the warrant article. They didn't make it. So the three warrant articles in specific are article thirty-four with respect to the PRDs.
Mm-hmm.
And and the biggest issue was whether or not the planning board, as opposed to the zoning board of appeals, should have the final say. The uh article thirty-five, I'm sorry, it took this a long article. Article thirty-five, which is the uh hammerhead lot, same question as to whether or not hammerhead lots should be decided by the planning board or the PRD.
Actually, we, we suggested that one, that we didn't want to deal with that.
Exactly, right, yes. I was, I was getting, I was about to get there. And and relief from parking requirements, um which is, you know, uh is a basically a, a statement that the planning board had been using certain criteria to think about relief from planning requirements and they would like to make those part of the, you know, they'd like to actually state them as opposed to sort of having them be informal. And I, I think that, I, I agree with Theo first. I mean, I, one of the, more of us was like, who, we know, nobody wants them to deal with hammerhead lots, so. If the planning board would like to actually deal with it, good for them. And and I think that the PRD, the PRD, the argument at the time was the PRD was that there are a number of other special permits that the planning board is the sort of authority on in this similar kind of vein, and the PRD is kind of its own separate view, right?
There's residential clusters and residential compounds.
Right. And so those could all fit under the same thing. Um and I do think that it's a, that it's, that it was there, that Elizabeth was not wrong that the sense of the meeting, at least from John, well, from, I, I'm not sure I totally got completely Theo's sense. I know John and I sort of are like sure, you know.
You guys deal.
You guys deal with it in part because by the time, I mean, the typical PRD when it comes to us is pretty well sorted out. I mean, I think about the one that we just did on um Bedford Street or Old Bedford Road or whatever it is, where, where that one went through all those things. And by the time we got it, the entire meeting was really an opportunity for the um citizens who wanted one more shot to make a point, to have another shot to make a point, but basically it was done. And I think a lot of PRDs are at that point. This is, this particular situation we're dealing with is somewhat unique just because the, the planning board, um I think I'm not going to put words in their mouth, you know, you get a little bit of a feeling that they sort of got frustrated and say, you know, let's just finally get this over with. Um and so um so we as a board here can make whatever decision we want to make. I'd say that board, if they would have been asked at the end of the meeting to have a formal vote as to whether or not we were in favor, or we were basically generally in favor of those things, we probably would have voted to say sure. At least as to those issues. I think we had some more questions about accessory uses and so forth that we didn't, we weren't as comfortable with the answers. So we would have said sure, and then this arti- warrant article would have come out and said the planning, the zoning board agreed and.
So Elizabeth would have been. So Elizabeth would have been right.
You'd have been, you'd have been, you'd have been stuck with it, so I'm I'm mostly just worried about, I looked at this as more of a governance, it wasn't that I didn't think the people at the table agreed, I just thought that we are, if we're gonna s- state in something to the public that we, the zoning board, believes and we should do it. Now, that doesn't mean that having not voted on it before, we can't have another different view.
Right.
My personal view on this, I started out exactly in your camp, that this is a good example of why you ought to have an appeal, and if this, if you can appeal to the zoning board of appeals instead of a court, maybe that's, maybe that's useful for the town and all that kind of stuff. Um, and I've also heard the argument that, you know, um, not having the final authority means that the planning board, the planning board, uh, you know, doesn't have the the power, if you will, to sort of make requirements, I think that's strong. My third uh data point is, when I was on the planning board, and we uh originally approved South Meadow, what is now South Meadow Ridge, um, and the zoning board of appeals knocked it out, which we were kind of annoyed at because we worked awfully hard to make that thing, and then they came back with a different plan, and ultimately it got through, so I mean, I've sort of bet on all sides of this.
Do you like, do you like the plan they came back with?
Uh, you know, I always called it a mighty fortress is a PRD, but, you know, cause it just looks like a castle there, but but I love the cabbage field, or whatever it is in now.
Yeah.
I mean, that, they preserved eighty acres of open space, let's be serious, I'm I'm not, never been wild about that PRD personally, but they preserved eighty acres of open space, or forty acres of open space, and that was for a farm, which was, which was great, and it's still farming to this day. That's prob- that's probably the biggest issue with the current PRD is that it doesn't, I mean, there it it it's hard to find a huge amount of benefit from, but anyway, that aside, so I, I mean, personally, I'd be more than happy to have the planning board deal with it, I think I think somebody's gotta deal with it, I think they've got expertise, um, at say ninety percent of the time, ninety-five percent of the time, that would be enough, and and people ought to be able to move on, but, um, you know, it's worked this way for all the years I've been in town government, so.
Well, that's another thing, it's it's worked this way, I mean, it sounds like in the example you gave it, the pushback did create something, no, I understand your argument too, if they had been able.
Well, it, I mean, it 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 has worked and it hasn't, well, I mean, Southfield is an example, Cumberford Road was an example, planning board said yes, board of appeals said no, went to court, came back and got approved, and we have twenty-eight acres of really gorgeous open space, so, um, I I think, I I think it it I I think it all, it it's depends, it it's, um, but from a um from a true benefit standpoint, as far as the process that the applicant goes through, the process that the citizens go through, the process that staff goes through, um, I just, I I see there are certain instances where the current planning board recommendation to the board of appeals does have some benefit, but I think on the whole, I I don't think that outweighs the benefit the other direction for, you know, the staff, the applicant, citizens, and just the planning board being able to, from a site planning perspective and the expertise that those seven members generally have in affecting change in a project. But that's just my opinion.
You were at the meeting.
Yeah, I'm 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 actually looking at it from the applicant's side, and I think today, tonight, you saw a bit of frustration from the applicant after doing all of this work and not getting approval, but getting recommendations, so, you know, as an applicant, you think, I'm almost there, I've got a good recommendation.
Well, and if you had stopped at the planning board, they wouldn't have been approved, or they would have got approved with these conditions that they.
Right, right, but I I think they would have still had to come here for a variance, right?
Right, that is true.
They would have, they would have, they would have, they would have been here for.
And higher level, right.
And and I truly think, you know, I've seen it many times, you know, applicants have a project, and it's like, okay, well, we just need site planning from the planning board, and we'll say, well, no, there's this aspect that pushes you into the board of appeals, okay, well, then I'll I'll work on changing it,
I'll take that out.
and I'll come back, so it's just site planning, right?
Although that that raises a question though, whether buried inside this warrant article on the planning board is that we like or don't like that requirement that the the, I mean, the way it's now written in that, in the height requirement, it would be that the zoning board of appeals would be able to uh agree a different height, right?
No, no, it's the board, no, it's the planning board.
I mean, the planning, I mean, the planning, I meant the planning board, the planning board would be able to do that.
As right.
Right, right.
So it would never come before us.
Right.
It's regarding height, no, right.
Right, right, but it come for for earth removal, that.
Earth removal, yeah, we'd still get earth removal people.
That's it, but, yeah, but as an applicant, you know, you it's, I I'm sure they fell blindsided tonight, um, so, and that.
Oh, I I don't know about that.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that.
Yeah, but.
I think earlier in the process, it's, I mean, the eighteen months they took was probably frustrating.
Right.
So let's get back to discussion of the bylaw amendment.
I mean, we, I think we have two our options here, one is that we can, one is that we can, uh, or three options. One is that we can, we can vote to say that we are okay with these bylaws, and then they they are what they are, and we've sort of made true the warrant. I mean, we've made the warrant true. The second thing is we can take no particular, we can vote no, we don't like that, and I don't know what that means, and we could potentially take a position at town meeting that we think these are wrong. And the third is, we could just say, we're not gonna act on them, and when we get the FinCom does its warrant article, that's the only one that anyone ever actually looks at for town meeting anyway, um, we could have it modified so it just says the planning board believes, and we're done, cause the zoning board of appeals would not have.
Well, it's it's only, it's only the explanation, so.
That's what I.
What is the, what is the town meeting?
People.
So, we could do this all our next meeting after we've thought about it, or maybe Robbie, you've brought it?
I'm not sure what the people. Maybe in some direction.
I mean, if, then if we wanna do that, I would say no action, cause I'm not convinced either way, but if we wanna push to, or we don't have to do anything, I guess.
Well, we don't have to do anything, and then and then they, and then, you know, the people who are responsible for the warrant can make whatever decisions they wanna make about what they say, but.
Right.
I mean, I just don't think it's right to say the zoning board of appeals is in favor, I mean, has 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 waited at this point right now, so.
Right.
Personally, I would vote, personally, I'd vote in favor of these things, cause I don't want anything to do with Hammerhead Lots, I'm actually convinced after thinking about it for longer than I should, that the planning board is the right place to do the other one and the third one, which I can't.
Relief.
Relief and parking, I think is a no, no brainer.
Right.
I'm more than happy to vote in favor right now of the two of them, the Hammerhead Lot and the relief from parking, and then we only have one question in terms of the description, but.
Sure, let's do that. Do you wanna vote in favor of those?
Well, I'll vote in favor of all three.
I know, you'll vote in favor of those.
But but it's gotta be unanimous, so.
I know, I'll be a pain, I know, but I'm just.
It doesn't have to be unanimous.
This one doesn't have to be unanimous, okay.
No. So you can, you can move the the, the board is in agreement with all three and take your vote, I mean, or two or one, I don't.
I mean, I wa- I guess, I guess what I thought was important to bring us, talk about it, cause we hadn't talked about it this board, so, now I've done it, you guys are a favorite. I still not, I I listen to your more experience on it, I'm not a hundred percent convinced about the planning board being the final word on everything, but I've seen, what I've seen has been different from what you've seen, it's so, and it's been a different planning board, so, and it could be a different zoning, I mean, it's gonna be a different zoning board, so
Right, no, I.
right now, you have a zoning board made up of a bunch of lawyers who I think do a good job of kind of.
Plus Theo.
Plus you, but, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Um, he's good at this like this, no, so, I think we we are, I like to think that we're pretty good about not letting our own.
Right.
Being pretty um objective about things, so, um, but you, that could change, there could be no one on this board that.
Yeah, I I think there's something to be said too, if you're in the weeds at the planning board, taking a fresh look from a higher elevation might lead to.
Someone looking slightly differently.
Different opinions on.
Cause I think it works the other way too, the planning board gets beaten down
Yeah.
in a, in a way too, right, so you hear it, you're hearing, and then like you said, they're finally like, oh my god, fine, so why would they be like, oh my god, fine, we'll just vote to approve it?
So let, let's for tonight.
I I I I will disagree with that statement.
Okay.
Um, I I, in all the years I've been on, um, I have never seen a planning board to say, you know what, it's been eighteen months and ten meetings, let's just approve it, uh, you know.
Well, in this one, in this, I mean, they they, it it could be a long, I can see, maybe they won't say it, but I can see what you're saying about, you're in, you're in it just as much as the applicant is, to a certain extent, and.
So I'd move, I'd move, just for kicks here, that we as a board support, um, agree to support the planning board in its efforts with respect to articles thirty-five and thirty-six, which are the uh Hammerhead Lots and Relief from Parking Requirements, and that we.
In at the road district, one, right?
What, is there another one?
Is that one?
No, I don't think there's, no, there was, that was the only ones that the the board, that's the only ones that they said we agreed.
You don't.
You don't have. That is not one of them. Okay, okay, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Yep, and so, yeah, not fairs and bazaars, I don't care.
I was gonna agree. All right.
So, so, and then I'd move that we do that, and then that we, if we have time next week, or next month.
I'll leave it on the agenda, okay.
Take up the other issue for the third one, so everyone can think about it.
Great, you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.